At this time, I would ask that we conduct a moment of silence and reflect on the events over the past few weeks as we journey toward a new beginning of our great city. Thank you.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Allen, I see all council people are present unless you like to do an official roll call?
Yep.
Okay. Now we're gonna...
(laughing).
Don't think about it so long next time. All right, we're gonna open it up to courtesy of the floor. Again, courtesy of the floor is for items that are not on the agenda for tonight. If it's not on the agenda, you'll have time to speak at that particular point in time. We've gotta get a seat up front.
(inaudible).
My question is, since we have a new mayor, I'm gonna ask him, is he gonna release the fire for National Plant?
I guess I need to go to that seat to answer this question. I will get with Mr. Hartzell tomorrow, it's Thursday, I will get with him sometime tomorrow, and I will get you an answer to that, Lou.
Okay, you know, it's about six, why is it late?
I understand that, but I lost eight towns this week, and it's not even a full week.
One other thing, you work for district attorney, and you had the OPEC problem we have in the county. I'm asking, what is Allentown doing attacking this problem? See, Allentown is starting problems, OPEC is easy to get out, and we're dead. And I need to get that we find, from the city of Allentown, what are we doing attacking this problem? Well, you know, in Philadelphia today, they're checking the homeless people out, they're finding out a lot of homeless people are getting involved, it's maybe have to look into a homeless problem and provide shelters, they aren't paid, so when you become homeless, they have a special place to go, and then they're kicked out, by the way, it's seven o'clock. And maybe it's a special issue, if you counsel should look into how we, Allentown, and then type the problem, might do more than just attacking the problem.
I'm not speaking for my official capacity, it's my day job, but I know that the city of Allentown, the police department is working hand in hand with the county, and we're actually one of the first areas to go back out, the police department is going back out with the county organization, and they're checking on people who have been taken to the hospital or who have overdosed, and especially those that have been brought back with the lock on.
Treatment, like homeless, it seems like, in Philly, I have an article, the big problem is with homeless people, OPEC problem, and they're finding, instead of putting them in homeless shelters, they're providing separate shelters to put them into, and maybe you can treat them better this way. So, maybe some, you and from the DA and city and police department, okay? It was a big problem.
We can, but you're right, it is, and they've been moving forward with this. This is the first program like this in the country that I'm aware of, but it doesn't seem to be with our homeless here. This problem is attacking every socioeconomic state.
He's an epidemic.
Yeah.
If I can have one more minute, because Julio's speaking, and I was speaking against you. I wish you guys would look into, I mean, Julio made a motion to turn me down when I'm selecting the city council person. I think council has to take a further look in how we appoint a mayor after Roger's 30 days, or, I think, the way it reads in the prohibition for city council members, my concern with selected, it's important, my concern with between elected and selected, and here it reads appointed, so it is an appointed position, and council's supposed to be elected position, a mayor's supposed to be elected position. Maybe you will use Roger, I don't wanna use for example, use Roger for an example, why would you prohibit Roger then, after he serves 30 days, putting his name in for mayor? I mean, I think before you, I know that solicitor made an opinion on this thing, but I think maybe you should get a further opinion on this thing, because we have a city controller that was appointed, I mean, we have past practice, does past practice take over a charter?
Well, you've got your minute, but one of the things that we're talking about doing is maybe getting a charter study commission going here, too, to look at the charter.
Yeah, but by that time, Roger, if you want to serve, I mean, and a charter commission makes a study, you begin more greater, or loser's own greater.
Because I wanted to go to medical school, too, but that's, you know, we're beyond that point, so.
So, I think what I asked, I'd be pleased, if you appoint a mayor for 30 days, just get another opinion on the difference between the appointment and election. I liked it in selection, I, Julio turned me down, and I tried to bring up selected and elected, but Julio looks at this thing differently sometimes, you know.
Thank you, Mr. Hertzler. Julio, I'll talk to you about it afterwards. Anybody else?
Hi, I'm Kim Oliver, I live at 352 Hanover Avenue. I've had complaints for I don't know how many years about what the city has not done. They've allowed structures to be built without permits, and when it was told to them, they didn't do nothing. The city has caused these problems because these structures are illegal, not up to the IRC, and they're on my property. Number two, I've been emailing everybody, Courtney Robinson, I've been emailing, I emailed you, Mr. Hanlon, I emailed Bill Harvey, I've emailed Dave Paulus when he was here, this is going back a long time, and they continue to do it. 352 did not get any permits for it.
352 what?
Hanover Avenue, he did not get any permits for any of the structures he built, which Todd Collins, back then, said that he discovered, the deck in the back was designed, there was never a deck, that's not on my property, I don't care. He put a deck out there, he put a roof that fell, almost killed his partner, okay? It was, it's up there, it wasn't anchored. All these structures are unsafe that he's building. Now, he builds a weight-bearing structure for the porch roofs with two-by-fours pieced together and plywood to hold the roofs, which is not treated wood, because I took the aluminum off, which Bob Sam went and inspected it after the fact, and he approves it. So, I told him when I went down there, came down here, I'll take the aluminum off, so he can inspect and see what's under it. I have pictures of everything. You got my pictures, Bill Harvey got my pictures, Leonard Lightner got my pictures, Matt Culber... It's ridiculous. And not just once did he build, and not just twice, he continuously does this. 348, Hanover Avenue, with the other side connected to May, he had the chimney leak, which I have CO in my body.
All right, we'll get an answer for you from Building Standards, and then we'll see. I don't know what you're talking about, you say you send pictures, I've never seen any pictures.
They all have pictures, you have pictures, right? You got all my pictures?
And I forwarded it on, as did Mr. Hanlon, to CD.
And then when I email everybody, nobody answers me, but this new issue now with 348, 348 Hanover, I had the light heat weatherization program in my house that discovered a leak in the shared chimney that Dave Gazdick owns, his rental, the slumlord, okay? He's not fixing it, it's three months, and it's an old leak.
Okay, we'll get, we'll get, we'll get you an answer from Building Standards, if you forwarded it on to Building Standards, we'll get you an answer. I don't have an answer for you tonight, but we can certainly get one, and we'll see if Mr. Hanlon gets it, and if we don't have one, hopefully we'll have it before the next council meeting, we should, and somebody can give you a call.
Time out, because nobody's even answering emails.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your service, Tracy. I'm a little late, so I hope I'm not, you just say your name.
Oh, my name's James Whitney.
From Allentown?
From Allentown, yeah. Oh, sure. Okay. I think Roger McLean and Ray O'Connell both have the experience necessary and skills to lead our city into a much brighter future, but myself, like a lot of people in Allentown, are a little confused, because we're reading things in the morning call, and on WFMZ, about the eligibility that they have. When we inquire to people who are more educated than myself, as I always do, they tell me that it depends on how you interpret the rules, and I just have this feeling that with everything that the city has been through for the last few years, much of it, almost all of it, I was not here for, but it seems as though interpreting rules is something that we don't, we can't afford right now. Following them to the letter is what we can. We have a mayor who was indicted, who interprets things like truth. He calls it incorrectly telling the truth, not correctly telling the truth. So, you know, I appreciate Roger, and I appreciate Ray, and I think that, like I said, they have the skills and the experience and the caring for our city, but I don't want anyone else to say, to be able to say a year from now, oh, man, like, they interpreted the rules, you know? So, I just wanted to say, I hope that in the next 30 days, that we appoint someone to mayor who is a clean-cut appointment, who no one in the community will be able to wag fingers at. And as you know, there are tons of people who are gonna wag fingers anyway, but I just think that we should go with like a very safe, a safe, clean appointment. That's it. And I'll just say, actually, I'll just say Charlie Thiel. Yeah, I think that, and I just don't want it to go to the courts, because who knows who we're gonna get if the county gets to decide, you know? If the county gets to decide, then they might get May, I don't know. Thank you, guys, thank you for your service.
Right, and I want to thank you for the kind words, and I want to thank you also for Mr. O'Connell, but just for full disclosure, we're not related in any way, shape, or form, right?
We're not related, no, we're not related. Haven't had the pleasure of meeting and cursing you, but thank you so much. All right, there.
Hello, my name's Joe Hoffman, I live at 334 North 13th here in the city. I'll be a lot shorter in three minutes. I wanted to invite everybody on council, and for that matter, everybody in the audience, tomorrow night, the Lehigh, all right, let's start over here, the Liberty Bell Shrine Museum is having their annual meeting and reception. 6:30, they'll have a nice reception with plenty of food for everybody. At 7:00, they're gonna have a talk by Frank Whalen on immigration in Allentown, past, present, and future, and after Mr. Whalen's talk, they're gonna open their new exhibit on immigration in Allentown, past, present, and future. I think it's a wonderful event, it's free admission, as a board member of the Liberty Bell Shrine Museum, I really would hope to see some of you there. I think it's right up the street at Zion Church, so it's not very far, and I know the church has been very helpful to the city on the homeless population and on other matters. The other thing I would like to bring up Terry, run's attention, is this city is about to do a very major thing, as a matter of fact, I think it started yesterday, and that is that they are beginning to create their brand-new comprehensive plan. The purchasing office, I believe, has the documents now, and they're gonna do their normal process, go out to bid and select a team of consultants, and for a two-year project. In my very humble opinion, I think the next decade in Allentown is gonna be the Fisher-Cut Babe decade for the whole city. You have made a lot of progress in certain specific areas, particularly the downtown, and I'm, as a lifetime resident of the city, I am very, very grateful for that. It's a wonderful improvement. But we are now getting to that flashpoint where we are either going to integrate and assimilate fully as one town, or we're gonna permanently split apart, and I think that comprehensive plan is going to be the vehicle that makes that happen or not happen. Fortunately, it already has some money devoted to it, probably enough for the first half of the plan, but I would really urge council to think seriously about where that second half is gonna come from, and appoint some grant people that really know how to go out and get money.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffman. Just to let you know that some, there's also president's council meeting tomorrow night, too, and some members have committed to that, but thank you very much for the invite. Anybody else? Courtesy of the floor. Only once, twice, three times? Okay, we'll move on, approval of minutes, comments and consent? Agree, so approve?
Yeah.
Thanks. Full business.
Communications.
Mr. President, I have something under open business. Oh, got it. Mr. President, here in acting, maybe I can, instead of posing this to you, I can pose it to acting Mayor McLean. The status update on hiring of the two new paramedic positions in EMS, do we have any update on where that is?
I got an update on that today, they were, do you know it, that they've been hired, or it's, I think, I think the paperwork has been signed?
The paperwork has been...
Has been signed?
Right.
And it's out there?
It's out there.
For picking applications?
Yes.
Fantastic. Thank you both very much.
Mr. President, I actually spoke to Mr. Rods yesterday, and that was signed and approved by Mayor Palowski, and there are four current part-timers that are gonna be selected for those jobs, so they're gonna actually stay in sign.
Very good, I saw we had a resignation, too, but that'll be handled. Okay. Anything else under open business? Communications, executive session announcements. City council held an executive session at 6:30 PM on Thursday, March number one, 2018, with the city solicitor to review the options afforded to city council under the Home Rule Charter with respect to the office of the mayor under the circumstances. The subject of personnel is an exception to the open meeting requirement under the sunshine law. City council also held another executive session this evening at 4:30 PM to discuss a feasibility study for a possible real estate acquisition and the appointment of a city solicitor. The subjects of real estate acquisition and personnel are exceptions to the open meeting requirement under the sunshine law. Also, city council is taking applications for the office of mayor. Contact council office, Mr. Hanlon or Tawana, and go to the city website for information regarding submitting of an application. Council plans to begin the selection process the week of March 26th, and if necessary, go into the following week, will be under a 30-day window here. On March 28th at 6:00 PM, representatives from the post office will be, will discuss their relocation project here in council chambers. And we have a proclamation for the Order of D-Melay, is there somebody here from D-Melay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. President and members of council. My name is Edward John White, I live at 1922 West Thailand Street in Allentown, and I'm very pleased and want to congratulate you on your new position, and thank you for having us today. We'll put the ball back in your court unless you want to explain why we're here.
I will explain why you were here very shortly, but thank you for your congratulations, I feel like I have a split personality now, so, I kinda felt that way beforehand, but I will read the proclamation here for you. Whereas Order of D-Melay is a chartered, a character-building organization for young men between the ages of 12 and 21 years old, and whereas Order of D-Melay was founded in 1919 in Kansas City, Missouri, and the Allentown chapter was formed in 1926, and whereas Order of D-Melay celebrates D-Melay Month in March and will be marking its 99th anniversary of its founding, and whereas Order of D-Melay opens doors for young men, helping them develop civic awareness, personal responsibility, and leadership skills to vitally needed in society today, and whereas Order of D-Melay helps young men seek to prepare themselves to become better citizens and leaders of tomorrow, a couple more whereas. And whereas Order of D-Melay has carried out programs of athletic competition, social activity, civic, civil service, and charitable programs, and builds character that helps develop character traits which will strengthen men of all ages, and whereas Order of D-Melay builds on important bonds of friendship among members, which has more than 1,000 chapters worldwide. Now, therefore, Allentown City Council does hereby celebrate the 99th anniversary of the Order of D-Melay on Wednesday, March 7th, 2018, and its dedication to young men, helping them to better become citizens and leaders of tomorrow, and just for an order of explanation, the seventh was a snowstorm, or predicted snowstorm, so it was canceled until tonight. This is your proclamation and congratulations.
Thank you. If I may make a few introductions and get a group picture with all the members of council with the young men who are here, sir.
Certainly, man, I think the council members would also like to shake their hands, but...
That would be great.
That would be, when you're done.
I'm the chairman of the advisory council, I joined D-Melay in 1975, that's a long time ago, so I've been a member and now senior D-Melay, and I'm a Mason. The organization is sponsored by the Alan Bojan Commandery, the Knights, the Christian Knights Masons in Allentown, and we meet at Allentown Sonic Temple, and it's an organization that has an advisory board. I'd like to also mention, Mom Ingrid Green is in the audience with us, she is the mother of one of our current members, who also happens to be our presiding officer, and this young man here is Miles Green, he is our master counselor, which is equivalent to city council president in organizational structure, and this is Ethan Flanagan, who is our senior counselor, which is the equivalent to the vice president of the city council from organizational standpoint. They are the young men who actually run a business meeting under Robert's rules of order, similar to your meetings here, and this is an opportunity for them to see government in action, as well as to be recognized, and as the chairman, as senior D-Melay, as the person who initiated this process, I want to thank all of you for your support of Allentown D-Melay over the years. This is not our first time here, it's not my first time here, it might be their first time here, but we really appreciate it. We seek to take good young men and make future leaders, and hopefully someday, one of them will be sitting up front here or in their municipalities.
Thank you, and I hope to see that, and since next year's the 100th anniversary, that should be a bigger celebration.
We will be back, and I'm hoping that both of these young men will be back next year for that 100th anniversary.
Sure.
Miles, would you like to thank the council president?
Thank you for helping us get this proclamation.
You're quite welcome.
I'd like to thank you as well, I mean, it's been a big part of my life, and I'd love to see local government in action, it's very interesting for me, so, thank you.
And we love to see young people involved in worthwhile organizations, too, so congratulations to you guys, and all of you, thank you.
After the ceremony, handshakes and photos?
Sure.
All right, awesome. You guys wanna go up there and stand right in front with the proclamation between you, and we can kind of just get in behind the, was the city of Allentown, right there? If you can't see me, I can't see you, so, all right, yeah, he can see me, you're okay? Good, right there, Mr. Zookel, if you could just move your head a little that way, and everybody else is good. Ready? I'm gonna take a couple, there's law.
Mr. Glaser, you should be up there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Technically, you were elected.
I have been elected.
Technically.
No, I was elected. I hold the record for appointments in the city of Allentown, but I'm only there three times.
Wow, I should come see you someday.
All right, we'll move on to reports from committees. First, budget and finance, Mr. Griedy.
Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Mayor. The committee met on February 28th, we discussed the finances of the city, the monthly finances, review the report, both the month of January and the month of December 2nd, we usually divide December by three different categories, you know, the finances, the account receivable and account payable, and we also discussed the account 46, that's the accounts that basically deal with contracts, and we discussed the capital projects report, and we don't have any meeting scheduled for the future, we will have a meeting, hopefully, at the end of the month or the next month, because of the snowstorm, and that's my report.
Thank you very much, sir. Committee on Economic Development, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee has not met since the last council meeting, and no meeting is scheduled at this time.
Human Resources Administration Appointments, Ms. Hoppe.
Yes, we had a committee meeting this evening on Bill Four, which is an ordinance authorizing execution of a cable franchise agreement with the electric company. A future meeting has not been scheduled.
Thank you very much. Parks and Recreation, Ms. Bogdan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met on February 28th, and a future meeting has not been scheduled.
Thank you very much. Public Safety, Mr. Hendricks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Committee has not met since the last council meeting, currently there is no future meeting scheduled.
Thank you very much. Public Works, Mr. Zookel.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee met this evening, a future meeting has not yet been scheduled.
Rules, Chambers, Intergovernmental Relations, and Strategy, that strategy, that would be myself. We met this evening, and we have one bill, and I, my paper's gone, so I forget my number, but we have a resolution in front of us, just first recommended the full council for this evening.
R-6.
R-6, yeah, it'll be on the agenda. Okay, City Controller's Report.
Thank you, Mr. McLean, I have three audits I'd like to report on this evening. We did a, an audit in risk of the inland marine insurance. Inland marine insurance identifies loss to movable and/or specialized types of property. This category of insurance includes property coverage for construction equipment and a wide variety of other types of property. The city of Allentown purchases their insurance to cover pumper trucks, ladder trucks, rescue vehicles, hazmat vehicles, and probably some of those huge freight liners that Republic Works. The city uses Engelbright, Engel, Handbright and Davies as our broker, and his coverage has been placed with Harleysville Worcester Insurance Company. I didn't have to. Which is purchased by Nationwide. The objective of this audit was to determine whether the payments made to Harleysville Insurance Nationwide for premium for made in compliance with the contract, determine whether the invoices are properly categorized for billing purposes, and to determine whether the terms of the contracts were in compliance. This audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted governmental auditing standards and utilized an approach... Uh, this audit was conducted in accordance with generally accepted governmental auditing standards, and utilized an approach that included staff interviews, reviews of documents and reports, and examinations of individual financial transactions. The period selected for testing was October 2016 to January in 2018, and it's not period, but it's because the, um, uh, the policies do not run on calendar years. They run on their own kind of year. And these, these policies run like October to October. Um, we reviewed the contracts and tested compliance and tested opportunities for improvement. We obtained a list of change orders and verified the proper classifications and costs. Uh, our first finding was, uh, contract renewal rate weakness. The contract and change orders were compared to the payments made, and an overpayment of $36 for 2017 was identified. Uh, we recommend where applicable, refunds for the overpayment should be requested, and the future payment should be verified to ensure that no additional overpayments are charged. Uh, the administration responds, after reviewing the invoices and spreadsheet, it was determined that there was an overpayment of $6 by the city to Nationwide, and Nationwide has agreed to this finding and is issuing the city a check for $6. Uh, an additional auditor's comment, although RISK has committed now to paying the invoices annually as opposed to making numerous installments during the course of the year, and this will help avoid late fees, the payment should be verified to the documented evidence to ensure that no additional fees are being billed. And that was part of the problem. They were paying off the invoices but not double-checking that the invoices which follow one another were correct, so there was a difference between the ending balance of one invoice and the beginning balance of others, and they didn't have the backup to, um, to substantiate the difference. Now, eventually, they got most of it, which whittled the difference down to only $6, so it's, it's less of a question of money, but more a question of, do we check our invoices? Do we have a process to do this in an ongoing fashion? Um, the second finding was that agreements were not forwarded to the controller's office. The controller's office is, is the official repository for all city contracts and agreements. Uh, the contracts and change orders were not originally forwarded to the controller's office. They had to be requested through RISK. Uh, we recommend, of course, these things be forwarded to the controller's office, and going forward, RISK management will send all change orders and policies to the controller's office. Um, the basic, uh, the next one is accounts payable weekly check review from 27 January to, uh, March 2nd. In this time period, we reviewed 570 checks with a dollar value of a little bit over $4 million. We did six wires with a value of, um, about $857,000. We noted in Parks and Rec a lack of ticket distribution process. We identified a check for an advertising partnership package, which includes 58 Steel Hogs game tickets. Currently, there is no process for ticket distribution controls, and we are especially sensitive to that in light of the audit that was done at Human Resources two months ago, where there were gift cards that were not subject to proper control. And we'd certainly like to, um, make sure that anything that's cash-like or convertible in cash has adequate controls, uh, to protect the city. Um, specifically, they go to employees, what's the selection criteria? Is a lot being kept with appropriate controls to verify recipients? And is Human Resources being notified so a 1099 can be issued? Um, this is for the golf course, by the way, and, uh, they've agreed to establish an acceptable protocol for ticket distribution, and we've notified them that we will audit the process and the distribution of game tickets in the future. Uh, sales tax was paid on two invoices. Um, late fees were paid on, on three, uh, for a total of, um, about $400. All bureaus were advised of the issues. The checks were released. And some of this happens, uh, with the, the year-end, um, needing to transfer money into proper accounts, or the beginning of the year with needing to get the, uh, blanket purchase orders issued. Uh, incorrect expense account used, was used on 11 checks. Once again, the departments have been advised of this, and will work to see that expenses are billed to the proper expense accounts. Uh, untimely payment of invoices. There were 24 of those throughout the city, and once again, most of these are because needing to transfer money at the end of the year, or because you have to wait a little bit in the beginning of the year for blanket, uh, POs to be set up. And finally, and I know this is the one you truly all been waiting for. Uh, bank reconciliation review. This is for the month dated, uh, October 31st, 2017. I think that, um, the finances were working very hard to catch up to the end of the year. Uh, I think we're working on October at the moment. Hopefully, we'll get September out to you shortly as well, and they need to do that because the CAFR is gonna start in a couple of months. And then, and finances have some folks out, unfortunately, from the federal issues. Uh, there were 24 bank reconciliations for a total of $32. There are a couple of new findings. Um, number one, inaccurate bank reconciliation. The original date of this report was 3/8/18. Uh, payroll bank reconciliation is a three-part reconciliation, and requires the bank's outstanding check balance to be reconciled to Eden's outstanding checklist and to the cash sub's book balance. For August, the, uh, the adjusted balances in the bank reconciliations, um, the bank slash ARP was off by a little bit over $25,000. Uh, the book was off by $25,000, and Eden was off by $25,444. Due to staff shortage in the finance department, the controller's office assisted in identifying and correcting the bank reconciliation. We recommend administration should document bank reconciliation procedures and cross-train staff to ensure continuity of the reconciliation process, and administration agrees and will review with appropriate staff. Uh, the second finding, second new finding, uh, unreconciled differences on the bank reconciliation. Payroll bank reconciliation has an unreconciled difference of, well, $1,183.25. This difference appears to be due to the special pays and voids. The administration should revisit the reconciliation, which we call the true-up process, for special pay and voids to ensure entries are being made correctly. The difference should continue to be researched, and if not reconciled within a reasonable amount of time, the difference should be adjusted on the books, and the administration agrees and will research, and upon our finding, we'll adjust accordingly. And finally, there was a voided check on Eden, uh, that was not properly posted on the cash sub. A payroll check was voided on the bank in Eden for $5,800. The check was voided on the cash sub, but it was voided as 374165. When booking a check void, the administration should ensure the amount recorded on the cash sub agrees to the amount being voided on the bank in Eden, and the administration agrees, and will discuss with appropriate staff. I know some of this stuff is pretty dry, but it all contributes to having, um, a well-run city with numbers that we can all have confidence in. Thank you.